Council come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mandy, could you please call the roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Butler.
Carlstone.
Hopkins?
Here.
Dan Strickland.
Here.
The city council has adopted a code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others, listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up to address insivility. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV, so anyone who speaks to council, please come to that podium, speak into the microphone, so that people at home can hear you and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of the tentative agenda?
So who?
Ben Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland.
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone? Carlstone?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council concerning any agenda item, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Some.
For Brandon Horace Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we'll enter into a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed seventeen million dollar local option sales and services tax revenue bonds. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And for those in attendance and those watching at home at Pella Fiber, I'd like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on for this evening. As Mayor DeWort stated, tonight's public hearing is on a proposed bond issue for local option sales and services tax of a not to exceed amount of seventeen million dollars. And the resolution we are entertaining this evening institutes proceedings to take additional action on behalf of this proposed bond issue. Now, as the council is aware, the proposed bond issues will be used to fund the construction of the Pella Recreation Center. Now, we do have a timeline up on the board, and it's important to note, as far as tonight's consideration, we don't have official bids for the bond issue that will be considered on the seventeenth if council approves this resolution this evening. And specifically on the seventeenth, we'll be considering a bond purchase agreement, so that will be the terms of the bond, along with the proposed interest rates that we have. If council approves the purchase agreement on the seventeenth, the actual authorization for the issuance of lost bonds will be on July first, and closing is tentatively scheduled for July seventeenth. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the staff presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any written comments, Mandy? Council comments? Any comments from a member of the audience? All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Hopkins, Ben Strickland, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six eight five one entitled Resolution Instituting Proceedings to Take Additional Action for the Issuance of Not to Exceed Seventeen Million Dollar Local Option Sales Services Tax Revenue Bonds. Looks like we got something to add here.
Actually, on this item, I don't have any additional items to add, Mr. Mayor. It's just the public hearing that we have on the matters for additional action, so.
Okay, I have a motion for approval.
Support.
Hopkins, Brandon Horace, any discussion?
I have a quick question about how to understand why it's fifteen million when we just talked about seventeen million.
Yeah, the seventeen million is what traditionally the city council has authorized in discussions on the financing of long-term facility plan. And so the public hearing is just an amount of not to exceed seventeen million dollars. The proposed bond issue, we believe, will be less than that. It will be more like fifteen point six.
How will we determine that? How will we determine that? I'm sorry.
It's based off our financing plan that we have right now. Instead of the full seventeen million, what we're planning on doing is issuing about fifteen and a half million dollars of local options sales and services tax debt. We'll by June thirtieth of this year, we should have about a million and a half of the dollars in the local options sales and services tax fund that we'll be able to use some cash on hand to help pay. So, but the proceedings are just traditionally in line with what council's established as far as financing the plan, and so it's just simply a not to exceed amount.
If we needed more, we could go get up some.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion to adopt the resolution. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler? Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six eight five two entitled Resolution Approving Officials Approving Official Statement. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And what this resolution would does is approve the city's official statement for the sale of a proposed fifteen point six million dollar local office and services revenue bonds series. Now, the official statement basically terms is provides financial information for potential purchasers of the city's bonds. It lists the terms of the bonds as well as a lot of info, financial information regarding the city of Pella is included in the official statement. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we spent quite a bit of time working with bond council on this item, on it, and we're more than happy to answer the questions that council may have as far as the official statement for the proposed bond issue.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six eight five three entitled Resolution Approving Ordering the Preparation of Plans and Specifications, Form of Contract, Notice of Hearing, and Notice of Letting. Setting date for public hearing, authorizing the taking of bids and authorizing bid opening for the sanitary sewer chip lining project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution actually does is set establishes the public hearing date for proposed sanitary sewer lining project. That date is going to be on July first if council approves this resolution. It also authorizes staff to seek bids on the project. And basically what we have here is a lining of a sanitary sewer main, and this will be a large collection main that we are proposing with this as well. And then we also have an alternate bid amount for some eight-inch sanitary sewers as well. Now, as far as the overall cost of the project, including the alternates, it's just shy of two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. Let's go ahead, please, Mandy. And we do have a description of the mains that we are planning on lining for this project. But once again, if council were to approve this resolution, the critical dates that we have up for the project is on June twenty-sixth, we will be conducting a bid letting for this project. Hopefully, on July first, we'd have a construction contract for council to consider. If council were to approve of July first, we anticipate issuing a notice to the contractor on July twenty-ninth to proceed with the project, and actual final completion is scheduled for next June. So with that, Mr. Mayor, again, we're just simply taking the necessary steps to start the legislative process for this proposed project, and staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Ben Strickland, Brandon Horace, I heard, I heard.
That's all right. That's okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number six eight five four entitled Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Twenty-eighty Agreement for the Shared Use of the Pella Indoor Recreation and Aquatic Center. Buying between the city of Pella, Iowa and Pella Christian Schools. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor DeWort stated, what we're entertaining is a Twenty-eighty agreement with Pella Christian Schools on it. Now, the Twenty-eighty is just simply a reference to Iowa Code Twenty-eighty, and then what that is is government lingo for a contract, and that's what we're considering this evening with Pella Christian. I would like to preface my comment that this contract that we're considering with Pella Christian is very similar to the contract that we approved with the Pella Community Schools on April fifteenth. Really what the intent is, is to help finance operations at the new Pella Recreation Center. This particular agreement, over the term of five years, Pella Christian has agreed to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support operations at the Pella Rec Center. With fifty thousand dollars being due annually, and the first payment is proposed to actually occur on this year on July thirty-first. Now, in exchange for this, Pella Christian would have priority access to one basketball court for two hours a day, basically during the time the school is active, so that will be August through May of each year. And looking at it from a programming standpoint, we think that's very manageable for the new recreation center. I would like to state, it's a very generous donation that Pella Christian is proposing this evening, and I would also like to state, after working with Pella Christian, we'd like to thank their school board, as well as Mr. Dan Zalster for the support of this project. But the key takeaway again is this is for operational support at the Pella Rec Center, and it's very similar to the agreement that we previously approved with Pella Community Schools. And finally, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Ben Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? So I just want to make sure and clarify, because I've had a few questions. The priority use, the way I read the agreement, it's one, it's one gym Monday through Thursday from three-thirty to five-thirty. Any other time Pella Christian wants to use a facility, they have to schedule it like anybody else and pay full. Because I, just saying priority, a lot of people interpret that to mean that they can use a gym whenever they want. That's not what the agreement states. It's during the school year, August to May, and it's one gym on a daily basis for basketball practice. And I too want to thank Pella Christian and their supporters for supporting this. This is a big deal that both the schools did this, and so really, really appreciate it. Anything, any other question, Amy? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six eight five five entitled Resolution of Pella City Council Approving Final Plaid of Hempstead Hills. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this resolution would do this evening is actually approve a final plaid for the Hempstead Hills subdivision. Now, this subdivision is just shy of thirty-nine acres, and we do have a proposed subdivision showing the diagram of the subdivision listed up on the big board. Now, it is important to note that the subdivision would consist of four millable lots on this as well. Equally important to note is council previously approved preliminary plaid for the development on February eighteenth of this year, so Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the proposed requirements, as council is aware, the final plaid is used if the parties can transfer land on this as well. And the final plaid needs to align with the preliminary plaid approved by the council, which establishes the infrastructure requirements for the development. We believe that is the case, the final plaid is, or is monitor does align with the previously approved preliminary plaid. Just to orientate everyone where this is at, it's currently outside of the city limits. This is the Eagle Creek subdivision located right over here. The boss lawn and subdivision will be over here, it was on the map right here, and the proposed subdivision that we have right here, and Highway T fifteen is right down here. Now, previously, the planning and zoning commission did review this final plaid at their January twenty-seventh meeting, and they did recommend unanimously approve the final plaid. So equally important to note, the city attorney has reviewed or been approved, has reviewed the legal documents that's associated with the planning process, and has approved the legal documents as well, and we are recommending approval this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Brandon Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, resolution number six eight five six entitled Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to the Contract with Shai Hattery for the Pella Indoor Recreation Aquatic Center Project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. And as Mayor DeWort stated, what's being considered this evening is amendment number one to the city's agreement with Shai Hattery, who is the architectural firm for the Pella Recreation Aquatic Center project. It's important to note that council originally approved engineering architectural agreement with Shai Hattery on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Now, as far as the basis for this amendment, under Shai Hattery's original contract, was based on seven point two five, or the compensation, rather, was based on seven point two five percent of construction cost. Plus, we identified supplemental services in the event that the city, the city needed those supplemental services for the amount of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we'll get into the contract amounts here very shortly on this as well. But overall, when we consider this amendment, and some of the key points of this amendment is the project description, and the contract is being modified to actually match what the city council has approved for the project. Earlier reference, the original contract actually had a ninety thousand square foot facility, while we actually approved a seventy-eight thousand square foot facility. The second big item that we have here, instead of a cost of construction, what we're changing, the payment that was being proposed to be changed to, is to a lump sum payment amount. And then we also have three change orders, totally four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that were also included within this amendment. We'll be explaining those here very shortly. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as change order number one, previously, this has been discussed with the city council. It's important to note, a little bit of background on this, Shai Hattery actually completed the design development of the original rec center on June seventh, and reviewed that with the city council shortly thereafter. Because of the estimated cost of the project, what the city needed to do at the time was incorporate alternative bids for the project. And council recall, where we ended up landing on the base project was basically two gyms, and instead of a recreational pool, we had a turf field listed in the base project, and then we also had two gymnasiums listed as alternates, as well as a recreational pool on that. Shai Hattery submitted a list of hours that they had, approximately fifteen hundred hours of additional work that they had on the project that they planned, and they did submit that to the city. We discussed those hours with the city council on March nineteenth, and the city council instructed staff at that time to proceed with consideration of this change order for two hundred thousand dollars at a future meeting. Shortly thereafter, the project was put on hold on that as well. So that previous discussion on this change order happened in March nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Change order number two actually changes the completion date of the project and extends the contract with Shai Hattery from December thirty-first of this year to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. It is important to note, according to the contractor, they believe there's a decent shot that we may have the project completed by the spring of two thousand and twenty-seven on this, but in order to extend the contract, Shai Hattery's new fees with that is an increase of a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Change order number three came about as far as the negotiated fee regarding alternates in the bid package. Council may be aware, remember when we considered the alternates, we had the four alternates considered for the project. In addition, Shai Hattery had two of the alternates that were considered combination bid packages on there, which there was no additional design services on there. And going through the contract on there and negotiating this out, there was a difference of opinion on the payment of compensation on this, and this is what we agreed to as far as the final contract amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, at least what would be presented to the city council on that as well. So let's kind of summarize this, Mandy, if we could. Let's go ahead, please. Now, as far as the overall contract, if council were to approve this amendment, what we'd be left with is to revise the engineering contract of a not to exceed amount of two million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Plus, we'd have reimbursable costs of a not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. Now, the original contract that we had based off contract estimates when we originally signed this agreement in July of two thousand and twenty-two, those fees would have just been slightly over three million dollars if we would have stopped with the original project. It's basically similar, so this is what we anticipated. It's actually a little bit below what the city anticipated when we signed the contract in July of two thousand and twenty-two. Now, with this, as far as the funding responsibilities, and specifically if we talk about the change orders on here, if council were to approve this amendment, our funding share of the project would be two million four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's based off the construction bids, and that's the amount that we would have paid Shai Hattery if we would have stopped with the original compensation of two million four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And if you recall, when we approved our agreement, Pella Rec, they were very generous in doing this. They have agreed to fund a hundred percent of the proposed change orders of Shai Hattery. So the three change orders that we talked about this evening for four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars are being proposed to be funded by Pella Rec under our contract, and they have agreed to, and we have confirmation from them, as well as the total dollar amount. So their responsibility under this contract would be four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, which leaves us to a not to exceed contract of two million nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, Mandy, is that it? Okay, all right. Mr. Mayor, I know that was a lot to take in. I would be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have on this proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins? And DeYoung? Any discussion?
So, Mike, just to clarify, it was a, it was originally the amount was a percentage of the contracts plus a whatever that fee was. Three hundred thousand plus seven and a quarter. This actually is just simply locking it into a lump sum, not to exceed basis. Gotcha.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number ten sixty-six entitled An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Pella, Iowa by conditionally amending the boundaries of the institutional district to include the property generally located in the western portion of three oh nine Roosevelt Road in Pella, Iowa, and directing the zoning administrator to note the ordinance's number and date of this change on the official zoning map. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, tonight's rezoning application comes to us from Federated Fellowship Church, and they've applied to rezone the eastern twenty feet of the property that is located at three oh nine Roosevelt Road. It is important to note that tonight's rezoning is, as far as the request, is to change the zoning classification on the parcel, which is this highlighted parcel right here. From M one, limited light industrial to institutional zoning. Now, in layman's terms, why this is important is anytime you have additional property that you're consolidating parcels, it needs to have the same zoning district. So the church is currently zoning institutional. We're just simply highlighting this parcel that's also church property that's been recently acquired, and we're rezoning that to institutional to align with the church's zoning. So let's go ahead, Mandy. Now, we do have the current and future use land map. The key takeaway on this request is we do not believe that this rezoning request constitutes spot zoning, as there is institutional zoning that is in very close proximity to the property as well. And once again, this is just a consolidation of parcels that's necessary for the church to be able to expand the parking lot. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, we do believe that the rezoning, the lines of the city's comprehensive plan, it's also allowed under the city zoning code when you consolidate parcels like this, and it's actually compliance and what's recommended under the city code to do exactly what the church is proposing to do. It's important to note that planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this application at their April twenty-eighth meeting. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to state the applicant is requesting a waiver of the third reading of the ordinance this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Ben Strickland, Brandon Horace, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone? Carlstone?
Yes.
I heard a yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
For Brandon Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Carlstone?
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Brandon Horace? Or Hopkins? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number ten sixty-seven entitled An Ordinance Amending Water Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is second reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like, once again, I'd like to refer everyone's attention to the big board for a very recent presentation on this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what this proposed ordinance that we're considering this evening would increase the city's water rates by five percent effective July first. On the key takeaway, council calls during the budget sessions that we conducted earlier this year, we felt that the five percent increase was necessary to support the ongoing maintenance of the city's water system, and also the future plans, capital improvement projects for the city. Now, if council were to approve this ordinance, proposed ordinance, we believe most residential customers, actually, typical residential bills is slightly lower than seven thousand gallons per month. So if you're looking at it for discussion purposes, the typical residential property owner would pay about two dollars and ninety cents per month as a result of this ordinance increase. Now, it would be effective on July first of this year, and Mandy, I don't know if we have a period. There we go. So with this, if council were to approve this ordinance, the new rate will be reflected on bills that are due on August twentieth of this year. And, Mr. Mayor, since we did discuss this during the city's budget process, we are requesting waiver of the third reading this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Ben Strickland, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Brandon Horace, Ben Strickland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Brandon Horace, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number ten sixty-eight entitled An Ordinance Amending Sanitary Sewer Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very similar ordinance to what we just approved for the water utility. This one is the city's wastewater utility. And once again, we are proposing a five percent increase on July first of this year. Very similar when we look at the ongoing maintenance of the system and plant capital improvements over the next five years as well. Council were to approve this proposed ordinance for the typical residential customer, that seven thousand gallons per month, right at two dollars and ninety-six cents. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, with this, the new rate would be effective on July first of this year, and they'd be reflected on bills that are due on August twentieth, and similar to the water utility, since we spent quite a bit of time during the city's budget work sessions discussing the wastewater utility along with plant improvements. We are requesting a waiver of the third reading this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Ben Strickland, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Brandon Horace, DeYoung, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Randall?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ben Strickland? Hopkins? Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Strickland?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
DeYoung?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number ten sixty-nine entitled An Ordinance Amending Municipal Telecommunication Utility Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As Mayor DeWort stated, what we're entertaining is an ordinance update as far as rates and services that are available for the city's telecommunications utility. And overall, as far as existing rates, what this rate proposed ordinance does, it consolidates commercial phone rates for most commercial users. The local rate is twenty-five dollars for local calls, and if you have long distance online, it's an additional twenty for forty-five dollars. What we're proposing is to consolidate this into where everyone receives long distance, but the new rate would be thirty dollars, and we believe that's very much in line with the city's competition as well. In addition, we have also proposed various services that we are continuing to add enhancements to the system as well. What this does is actually authorizes a cloud-based phone system as well, in addition to a five gigabit internet service. What this does is actually authorizes a cloud-based phone system as well, in addition to a 5 gigabit internet service as well. So there are all sorts of enhancements with Pella fiber that's reflected in this ordinance. And with this, we are recommending approval of the ordinance this evening, and very similar to the water and waste water utility, but we are requesting third, waiver, third reading this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
Support.
Hopkins, Deon, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Raynor?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to set aside the rules and place on third and final reading.
Support.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion? All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Move to adopt.
Support. Ben Straylin, Hopkins, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Raynor?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'll entertain a motion for approval of abstracted bills number 2176.
Move to approve and issue warrants.
Support.
Brandon Horst, Deon, any discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor?
Yes.
Deon?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member of any other business you want to discuss this evening before we go to policy and planning? Okay, any member of the public have any other business you want to address council with tonight? If so, please step forward to microphone, state your name and address. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Um, I would like to speak. Just want to kind of bring something to you guys' attention. It, uh, Mike was very helpful. Um, it's just something you guys have never done. Uh, so I wanted to at least make sure everybody had an opportunity to see it. I was approached in February.
Ben, tell us who you are, where you live, please first.
Uh, Jeff Dingeman, 1097 Highway G46. I was approached in February by a guy that wants to do a multiple apartment complex and on one of my lots in the new Fox Ridge. I know we're, we're getting ready to bring forward a TIF agreement on that for you guys to look at. But in order for him to do 150 units, he is looking at, um, state grants that he can get, but with the state grants, there has to be city support. And he's sent this letter, uh, last week. I've been helping for the last two and a half weeks. He's been talking with Gerald for the last two, three months. But in order for him to do the 150 apartment complex, give or take, maybe even more, he needs the full ask to do that. That would be three big buildings or two really big buildings. There's two options of how he wants to lay it out. He's leaning more towards the three buildings. Um, but if he would do that, he would have to do something that would require, um, some money from the city pellet for infrastructure, uh, hookups and stuff like that from electric, city, city water, city, um, or not city water, but city electric and city sewer. And then he would also need, uh, a tax abatement for 10 years to do the whole 150 units. If there was something where we had to maybe change some of that, he wouldn't be able to do the 150, and it might end up being 100 or even 50, just depending on where we, or if we could get somewhere. So, um, if you guys look at that, uh, I know on the, our housing opportunities for the Marion County here, the, this right here, where they had the, uh, full last year, they were talking, they needed 279 rentals over the next eight years, 181 of those at market rate. He's, the building going up would be market rate apartments. It would not be LMI. Um, and I think there's a need for that. We haven't had an apartment complex since High Point at market rate. Um, so this would be something good in that sense. I think it's a housing need that's needed. There's one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom. The one thing is, this is time sensitive. I'll wrap this up. This is very time sensitive. Uh, in order to get funding from the state, he has to present them with something by June 10. Um, and that something would have to have even just a simple, you know, we might be interested in this. Let's look at it over the next several months. We would be maybe wanting to do something to help out. That would be enough for him to apply for this before his deadline. But like I said, without the full ask, he can't do the 150, maybe over 10 years, but he can't do it. This would be 150 units. Um, if he did three buildings, it'd be one building in year one, two buildings in year two, or two totals, so one more building, and then a third building in year three, starting next year, if he was to get the full ask. Anyway, I figured I'd throw that out there. I, I know you can't like go over and make, hey, we're going to give you this, this, and this right now. But I figured at least maybe you could look at it and say, you know what, this is something Pella needs, because I think it is. I think we've been told this every time I've been here for the last five years, that we need stuff like this. Um, new housing, more housing, affordable housing, and this would kind of fit in that. I don't know if you looked at the prices, but they're pretty reasonable compared to some of the ones we got around town. Um, so that's all I got. Uh, I don't want to talk and talk and talk. So if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
So when you say he needs something from the city, you're, you're talking about he would need a financial punch? Or he would need a letter of support?
Uh, this, to get moving, he would need a letter of support, that you would be willing to possibly do some of the things he's done in the past. So he's done with Sioux Center and Carroll, Iowa, and they have given, um, money, like, so $300,000 or $500,000 towards the project, at completion of the project, and they have done 10-year tax abamments, 100%. And some of these have coincided with a TIF agreement, and that would actually hurt me for that 10 years if I didn't take that tax. But I would hope that it would, if I were able to get that TIF, that it would offset with the five years that I might, might get or the other lots across the street to help get my reimbursement. Um, but he's asking right there on the first page for 10-year, 100% tax abatement. Uh, obviously, the school will get their portion, because we can't take that out. So that's what, 40% Mike? Is that right?
Yeah.
30 or 40%? Um, anyways, they can't, that can't be taken out, so it wouldn't include that. Um, it would just be the rest. If that was something Pella's ever done, but if it was something they would do, uh, I gotta bring this to you because, uh, it's a big deal to me, because it's one of my big lots, and it would help me make everything work that I'm doing right now for the city belt. Um, and then, uh, he's also asking for $500,000 towards building improvements and infrastructure, and then, um, to waive electric and sewer hookups, installation costs, because it would, you know, benefit the city. But tax base would be roughly, I think, I could be off on this, but right around $70,000 per building. Give or take. So when it did kick in, it would be pretty beneficial to, uh, what you guys do here.
Okay, obviously, we'll have to schedule some discussions.
Well, so, I guess the only thing, your opinion of it, I didn't know if you had to discuss that at all, because he would be willing to move forward if, if the opinions were strong, that we would want to do something. Whether that, I don't even answer on what that is. Otherwise, he's got to pass and, it's the second one I've had in the last three years that didn't go through because we couldn't get support.
Okay. Yeah, we'll write that. Having just seen it now, we, I'm not prepared to formally opinion on it. I don't like the word tax abatement, I can tell you that.
No, I get that, but it's a big, it's a big deal for Pella. I think it's a loss if you leave it hanging.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we will adjourn to policy and planning. Uh, first item is to discuss, uh, have a discussion regarding the proposed development agreement and ground lease for Pella Corporation.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor Dwar stated, the purpose of this policy and plan United is to discuss proposed development agreement associated with ground lease with Pella Corporation for construction of a new hangar at the Pella Municipal Airport. We have some information on the proposed project listed up on the big board. Proposed hangar is just over 19,000 square feet. The current hangar is roughly 10,000 square feet as well. This is a very significant investment for Pella Corporation within our community. Um, the estimated cost of the new hangar is $4 million on this as well. We have some color elevations of the new hangar as well as the site plan later on in the presentation. But it is important to note, as we discussed the terms this evening, I think it's very important to note that Pella Corporation has a current lease at their, their current hangar out there. Within that lease, they used to have a vacant lot that was right next to, to their hangar. At the request of the city, they released that lot, and so Wyler Transportation Incorporated to build their new hangar at the Pella Municipal Airport. As a part of that lease meant, we approved an amendment back in 2019, 2020 that basically said if Pella Corporation ever exercised this option, that we would provide them with a buildable lot um, out at, at the location where this proposed hangar is, which is basically just south of the current hangars. So everything that we're doing this evening, proposing this evening, we've tried to align with the previous ground lease amendment at the Pella Municipal Airport, so please keep that in mind on this as well. But overall, when we talk about the proposed hangar, it will require an extension of the apron at the airport, the access road, as well as water main extension as well, to provide adequate fire flows, not only for this hangar, but the buildings at the Pella Municipal Airport as well. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Okay. Now, when we talk about the developer's obligations, which in this case would be Pella Corporation through the development agreement, their main obligation is that they would propose to build their new hangar by December 31 of 2027. So we do have a picture of the hangar up on, on the board as well. In addition, Pella Corporation has agreed to a minimum assessment for the new building of 1.7 million, which is intended to cover the annual debt service cost for the grading of the hangar site. We'll go over that here very shortly as well. Now, as far as the city's main responsibilities under a develop, under the development agreement, we would be responsible for extending the public infrastructure and utilities to the site. And then, in the event of utilities that are not owned by the city of Pella, we would be reimbursing Pella Corporation for their cost to extend the non-util, the city of Pella utilities up to the property line as well for the leased site. So let's go ahead, please, Mandy. Now, overall, as it applies to the city of Pella, we talked about the infrastructure for the project. There's some variables that are currently in play that may or may not occur, so the cost may be less than what we are showing up on the board. But if we were to look at the cost, what we believe the hot, high end of the cost right now, the cost to extend the apron and access road is just shy of $587,000. This council may be aware we applied for a grant through the state to be able to extend the apron. They also called for enlargement of the project as well, so that grant may reduce some of the city's financial responsibilities yet, but we haven't received notification on the grant from the DOT as of yet. We also have a water main extension. If the city were to hire a private contractor to extend an eight-inch water main down through the site, it'd be $394,000. If we were to do a city cruise, our cost would be well below $100,000. We're planning on doing it with city cruise. The dilemma that we have right now is if we're to extend that water main, it looks like it'd be sometime either during the spring or summer of 2026, is just the availability of our crews to do this. And we have a few other mandates that we're dealing with, both the state and federal level. Now, that's making things challenging, but we're going to try to do that project in-house. So if we were able to do it in-house, that would save about $294,000 on the cost of this project. We have the grading of the site that's being proposed for the Pella Corp site, so this would be the site that Pella Corporation would be leasing from the city. We think it makes sense to grade the site as we're planning for the grading of the apron, because it's closely tied together from third balancing needs. The cost of that is just over $418,000. And then we have estimated cost of the private utility extensions to the site of $66,000. So when we look at the total projected cost, the city of Pella, it could be anywhere from 1.2 to just shy of 1.5 million, somewhere in that neighborhood on this as well. Now, as far as the critical dates on the project, and what we've talked about for the timeline and to be able to meet the timeline, and be able, for Pella Corporation to be able to build the hangar during their timeline and obligation under the development agreement, is we'd be looking to have the hangar site graded by December 31 of this year, and that's very important for compaction purposes, particularly for the private site for Pella Corporation as well as the apron. So then we'd also be looking at constructing the apron and the access road, and the water main would be completed by September 30 of 2026. That would be the city's responsibility. Pella Corporation's responsibility is, once those items are done, they'd be able to build their new hangar on that as well. And that new hangar, under the terms of the development agreement, would be needed to be completed by December 31 of 2027. So, Mandy, let's go ahead, please. Now, looking at this and explaining the development agreement and how we would be finding out seeing this, if you recall, this is probably about a year and a half ago, um, we established a new urban renewal district that basically incorporates the western portion of Pella. It's called the West Side Urban Renewal District. But we have a lot of our new commercial buildings that are being constructed now that are included in this new TIF district. The dilemma that we have is we just formulated the new TIF district, and what the theory is of TIF districts is we know that we have improvements to the Pella Municipal Airport that the city needs to undertake on this. Now, to help us pay for that, what's being proposed is we're going to capture the valuation on a lot of the new development that's occurring on the western side of our community, and we're going to be able to use those incremental values to help pay for improvements at the Pella Municipal Airport. If those valuations, by the time we get done issuing the bond issued, total about $5.5 million, there may not be any tax impact, uh, on this project. If it's less than that, there could be a tax impact with that. So what we have is we just don't know right now. It's too early with this. We haven't seen the estimated valuations on this. And so the city's debt service levy increase, if there's no valuations, and if Pella Corporation's new building was valued at 1.7 million, is we believe the debt service levy in the first few years of the bond issue could need to increase between 13 cents and 17 cents. But what that means from a practical standpoint is the city goes to budget deliberations, what usually happens if the debt service levy goes up. What the city has been very successful in the past years is we've been able to decrease our operating levy and basically live within the same tax rate for the city of Pella. It's gotten a little bit more challenging with property tax reform in the state of Iowa to be able to do that, but that would be the goal on it. But in worst case, if we're not able to do that, that could be the tax rate increase that we are looking at, but it's extremely early to be, to know that. So, once again, how we would come up with the funding of our share of the project, we'd issue a general obligation urban removal bond, and if you were to look at the valuations on the western side of the community, the new buildings, we'd look to capture those valuations and use those valuations to help pay for improvements at the Pella Municipal Airport, which the apron project would be one of them as well. So before we go on from the development agreement, talk about the ground lease, is there any questions as far as proposed or tentative development agreement?
I have a question. Uh, so we're going to extend all the services to the property line or to the building, sewer, water, uh, power?
Yes.
And the non-city one is gas, I suppose?
Gas, and it's also the RAC electric out there as well. And then the third one that we have is there's a sanitary, it's somewhat like a sanding tank that would need to be installed out of the airport.
Oh, they run a sanding tank, something?
Yeah, it'd be a sand gravity filter that we would have. And so the total of those three would be $66,000. And what we've discussed, Pella Corporation was, we would reimburse Pella Corporation for the cost to extend those utilities to the property through their leased site. Once they're inside the leased site, Pella Corporation would be responsible for those costs.
Part of the rationale is because we will always online on providing.
Yeah. I think the rationale, these are very good questions, Mr. Butler, on it. Um, as far as the rationale, if you recall, we said earlier with the ground lease, with their existing ground lease, there was language in the existing ground lease that said the city would provide them with a buildable site. Now, there's some terms that are subject to interpretation. That's why I would say it's great to have a corporate partner like Pella Corporation, because we've been able to work with their staff on ironing out these things on it. But buildable site, what that means as far as grading the utilities on there, um, there could be some interpretations, but there's also language that the city would extend utilities to the site, and that's why we have a non-city Pella utilities to the site. So what we're trying to do is, in a nutshell, is live up to the obligations that we have with their current ground lease on it. We're structuring this with the development agreement because of the size of the project, so. Let's go ahead and talk about proposed ground lease, Mandy. Now, with this, you see you have the development agreement that talks about the economic ramifications of the project and the responsibilities financially for the project. So Pella Corporation, $4 million investment, 19,000 square foot hangar, um, here in city of Pella, about a $1.5 million investment in infrastructure. Associated with this, what we are proposing is a ground lease to Pella Corporation, and it's important to note that the ground lease was modeled after Wyler's existing lease at the Pella Airport. Now, due to the size of the investment of the project, Pella Corporation's asked for the same terms as what Wyler currently has. Currently, Wyler has a 39-year lease, which is, uh, what Pella Corporation requested. It is important to note on the end- Is important to know, on the annual rent for the ground lease, we're still negotiating that, so we don't have a proposal yet on that, but we anticipate we will very soon on that, but that's still one of the outstanding items. As far as the tenant improvements, Pella Corporation would be responsible for constructing all of improvements at the site, very similar to what's required under the development agreement. Equally important to note, at the conclusion of the lease, all improvements to the property, which could not be removed without causing structural damage, would belong to the city of Pella on it. So again, it's a thirty-nine year lease. At the conclusion of the lease, anything that couldn't be removed without causing structural damage would become the city of Pella's property on that as well. So, Mandy, do we have any additional slides? Okay. Now, this is something that we had with Wyler's lease, and to preface my comments with Wyler, at the time when we signed the ground lease with, uh, Wyler, this was sometime in the year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty of Wyler, we were still considering the regional airport, and at that time, what Wyler had was a condition in the lease that if we closed the airport, it would not allow them to use their building for industrial purposes, we would actually buy back the building at the net book value of the project. So these terms are very similar to what Wyler has. Pella Corporation's asked for the same terms on it from staff standpoint. We do not think that it's very likely that the city of Pella will close the Pella Municipal Airport on this or cancel the lease, and so we have this, the same lease provision in as well, but the cost of Pella Corporation hangar is four million dollars. The life of the hangar would be thirty-nine years, and the annual depreciation would be a hundred and, over a hundred and two thousand dollars. Now, the rationale with this is not only closing the Pella Airport, but we have to go a step further and tell Pella Corporation, they cannot use the new hangar site for any industrial development on the site as well. So you'd have to have those two conditions. We do not think that is very likely under this scenario with it as well, so we've included it in the proposed ground lease with Pella Corporation. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I have two additional points on this. Um, it is important to note the site plan has been reviewed by the Pella Airport Committee as well. And then we do have Mr. Zach Reyes, Representative for Pella Corporation. Zach's actually the AV department manager for Pella Corporation. We've worked very closely with Zach on this project. I'm sure Zach can be more than happy answering questions on behalf of Pella Corporation about the proposed development agreement as well as the ground lease. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes this presentation. Ultimately, what we're interested in is if council is in favor of the project, we'll schedule with both of these agreements for formal consideration, and we'll also start the process on the public improvements of extending the apron at the Pella Municipal Airport.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Questions, comments?
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us. This is exactly, um, what I had hoped for in the revitalization of our existing airport, so I'm in full support.
Is this, is this just going on the end, the south end of the existing, basically extending the apron to the south? We can go back with a slide or two on that, and I believe we may have had the site plan out. So this is the new hangar site, this would be the apron extension that we have up here, and so this would be the leased site that Pella Corporation would have, would be the building right here, parking right up here, and then this entranceway right over here. So the city would actually, the current hangars are located right up here, so the Pella Corporation would just be to the south. The apron extension would be down here, and what's been proposed is a hundred and sixty foot wide apron extension, and then the city would also be responsible for the entrance road extension down through the site.
What's the timing on the grant application with the state?
Yeah, we'll, we'll understand, it could be notified in July of this year, so.
On a side note, I went out, drove on the new asphalt today on the road, so if you had an opportunity, go, go do it. It's a massive improvement.
Did you go a little speed limit or anything?
I, I went very slowly, yes, too. I was, I was taking it in. It was nice and smooth and no gravel.
Really nice.
So anyway, I don't think they're quite done with everything, but you can drive out there. So, I would invite you all to drive out there. So any concerns we haven't discussed or keep the process moving? All right, we'll discuss, uh, discussion regarding proposal from Pella Historical Museums regarding public restrooms?
Yes, we have another exciting opportunity here in the city of Pella, this one's with the Pella Historical Society, and we have Ms. Jessie Ali, uh, the executive director of the Historical Society, with us this evening, and may turn it over very shortly to her and make this presentation to the council. But the Historical Society is planning, um, actually a renovation of the Wells Fargo Bank that's located at Seven Bowl Washington Street into a trolley station, and the color elevations we have listed up on the board. So, Mandy, let's go ahead. Now, so part of the trolley station is what the Historical Society is proposing to do is install public restrooms as well. And the proposal that we have is to, for the city, if the public restrooms were open from eight AM to nine PM, seven days a week, what the Historical Society is proposing is a five-year contract with the city of Pella, and where the city would help subsidize the cost to provide and maintain the public restroom, we estimate that cost to be about four thousand dollars per year. So with that, and before we turn it over to Jessie, is there any additional questions for staff? So with that, I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over to Jessie to explain the project.
Thank you very much, and thank you for this opportunity. Um, as you know, I'm at Pella Historical Museums, I've, I've been there for almost two years now in this current role, and the trolley station has been in the back of our minds and now the front of our minds since, I think, before I really even started. We're super excited about this project. The goal is to have the trolley station open and fully functional by next spring or summer, early summer, and maybe you saw at Tulip Time, the, the trolley driving around. So we are well on our way. We're at just over fifty percent of our fundraising goal as well. Um, but we're looking forward into the future as we look at public restrooms. I'm sure you all know that that is a huge need in the community, and hear it over and over and over from business owners and, and people who come, uh, as visitors to the community, and we're excited about the opportunity that we have to meet that need. Um, currently, in the Wells Fargo building, there are no public restroom type facilities. People ask us, why can't you open those now? And it's because there's like one stall in the back with one toilet, so not, not workable. Um, but as we look to be moving to a trolley station, obviously, public restrooms are a big part of that, um, process, and we thought, why not have this open beyond just our open hours? So we're still developing what open hours will be for the trolley station itself, how many tours will operate a, a day, if it's, uh, March through December, or April through October, if it's Monday through Saturday, or Thursday through Saturday, what that looks like. Um, but long story short, we would love to have public restrooms available all day, every day, um, moving forward. So the goal is to have an access point on the outside of the building. You don't see it in this current drawing because we didn't want to move forward with that until we knew that we had Wyler and broader support on the project. But the goal would be to have an external entrance with, um, a, a key that would lock after nine o'clock's or whatever time we decide, so that it's no longer accessible through the, the wee hours of the morning. Nothing good happens after midnight, they say. So, uh, we would love to have the city's support on this project. Uh, my staff calculated that we spend approximately four thousand dollars a year on the restrooms in the, um, interpretive center connected to the windmill. This is just materials, this is not paying staff, and this is only for when we're open between ten and five o'clock. So obviously, our costs would be higher than that, but we'd love to see the city's partnership at four thousand dollars a year for a five-year contract. Um, this is something that we think would be hugely beneficial to the community, and we don't necessarily see it as our responsibility to provide, um, but we want to, a, as a service to our visitors and to people who, uh, spend time in the community on a regular basis. Um, and so that's why we are hoping that we have your partnership and support on this project.
Well, bravo. I did have to say a bravo. And Mark O'Leary, we've been talking about public restrooms.
This is just a start.
Oh, I, I will tell you, um, in traveling throughout Europe, um, this spring and going to, I, I think twenty communities in the Netherlands, every community had a facility like this. And not only did they have public restrooms that were beautiful, they were also very plenty in their signage. So I didn't take some signs, pictures of the signs in the restroom that I would share with you, Jessie.
Please do, yes, please do.
But again, bravo. Thank you for giving us, thank you.
How many people was accommodated one time?
Uh, like I said, with the additional outside piece that Cleaner hasn't done for us, you can see that there's, I think, two stalls in each at this point, um, but the goal would be to keep at least two, um, with that outside access, so not huge, uh, the space that we have is not huge, um, but using what we have, that would be the goal. Fully handicap, ADA accessible as well, obviously.
Those are the topics that come up often for a long time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Somebody said it's a good start. We continue to explore more, but, and for four thousand dollars a year, I think it's a pretty good deal. We couldn't wait for that.
If you'd like to contribute to the campaign, too. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think you'll get full support for this agreement. Okay, uh, discussion regarding dental plan premiums for next fiscal year?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to actually turn the floor over to already charge director, Mandy, to, uh, counsel through these next few items.
So exciting, we'll talk about that in just now. So the next three items are recurring annual items that have to do with our employees, so I'll kind of take them off one at a time. The first is dental plan. We currently provide a fully insured plan through Delta Dental, and we did, um, it's raised a three percent increase, so very minor, first single, just under a dollar per family, approximately three dollars of an increase. So we come to you every year to make sure we are okay with that, and if you are, we'll put a resolution on the next agenda for formal consideration.
Remind me, how many take advantage of this?
We're right around eighty of approximately a hundred and twenty-five taken, so thank you. Okay. When this stops, we'll move over to our health plan. So our health plan, um, we have a partially self-funded plan, and it has been a staple for quite some time. Our fully insured plan is with Wellmark, and then the city buys down for the partial self-funding through Cisco. So when we look at rate increases, it's more than analysis than what we get back from Delta now, when they say it's three percent, and we don't really have much of a view about that. So for this year, um, our Wellmark fully insured had an eight point six percent cost increase. How I'm going to take that and then look at the financial performance of the self-funded part of it, and we had a very strong year for that. It was a mixture of last year, they were calling it from one plan to two, and that second plan offered cocaine through Wellmark, so it was a cost-saving of the city's parts, and we noticed that with our health fund balance, our internal health fund. Uh, so we believe, um, as staff, that we can keep the health plan premiums the same and not have to have any changes for employees this year. So very exciting, and the way that health insurance is right now, that we can keep us consistent. Um, and going forward, we're looking at adding in a high-deductible health plan that will just help with that as well, so that will be a goal for next year. Any questions on that? And, um, I don't, I have would be our amended wage scale. So you may recall, we adopted a new wage scale in two thousand twenty-three by Henry Associates, and when they give that wage scale to us, they recommend that we consider an annual market adjustment. We have done that utilizing the permanent cost index, and, um, it's, uh, so the last twelve month period increase was, and we did March twenty twenty-five, showed a four point five percent increase. Some cities take just that number, we are a little bit different, and we have it in two parts. The wage scale that you have in your packet, every step increase is a three percent increase, and all employees are eligible for that on their anniversary date, as long as they have a successful performance evaluation. So we take that as part of your four point five, is that three percent step increase, and then, um, what we presented in the budget was then doing an across-the-board one point five percent increase to equal that four point five. So all employees accept those in the executive pay plan, um, would receive a one point five percent across the board July one, and then on their anniversary dates, with a successful performance evaluation, then they would have that eligibility for the three percent step. This aligns with everything that was in the budget, too. We'll just come back to you for another discussion, and if you're good with that, we will put a resolution on the message of that.
Yeah, I think it's what we talked about a bunch of times, so.
All right. We'll go.
Make it official.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, uh, review of upcoming projects that we're going to be discussing?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have just a few projects listed up on the board, and some of these items will be discussed sooner than later, but, um, with that, uh, these are the items that will likely be addressed by the city council over the next sixty days on it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have on any other projects that currently, the city's currently undertaking, so.
How's our well number two?
Well number two?
Well number two, Jordan well.
Yeah, well number two is recently put back online. We had to repair to the motor on, on it, we've got it back in service on, on it, so right now it's operating, uh, very, very well, and we've also started the process of bought the instruct on a third Jordan well and putting in the permit from the state as well, so we've got that undertaken. But to answer your question, well number two is operational, back online.
I knew it was back online, it just wasn't, it was holding up.
What's that?
It was holding up, still.
Yeah, it, it, it was back online, we had a little bit of a, I'd, I'd say, issue with it, we had to take it offline very briefly, but we've got it back online once again, so.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Hopkins, Ms. Ryland, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no, Mandy, please call and roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Ryland?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Hopkins?
We are adjourned.